I'll take a roll call for the open workshop.
Here we go.
C20, 2019, it is 5:13. Trustee Alonso is absent.
Trustee Casillas.
Here.
Trustee Cruden.
Here.
Trustee Finity.
Here.
Trustee Willbeck is absent. Uh, trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Bellato.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Rogers.
Here.
I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Dagnan. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This week, we conducted all elementary school graduation. The board and cabinet had representatives at each event. Bayonne High School graduation will be this Monday at 6:00 p.m. Last week, I attended the luncheon recognizing the Bayonne High School Circle of Ten. Some of you will recall, I began this program in 1994. And the reasoning I, at that time, was we had such a large graduating class, I thought we should recognize more than just the valedictorian and salutatorian. So we expanded it to what we now call the Circle of Ten to give that recognition. It's a very nice program, and I'm glad it has continued. Also last week, I was joined by Assistant Superintendent Lopez and trustees Alonso, Casillas, Cruden, Finity, and Wilbeck at the rededication ceremony of the Bayonne Bridge. The event was held at the Dennis P. Collins Park, and our band and choir performed splendidly. This evening, you will see a resolution to accept the completion of your board goals for the 2018-2019 school year. Congratulations on a job well done. Woo-hoo! One of our goals was to implement the multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, in grades kindergarten through two, combining effective instruction, progress monitoring, and functional assessments linked to strategic intervention. This is being done to ultimately improve educational achievement, including academic behavior and social-emotional success for all students. Because of your efforts, we have assigned three multisensory reading specialists, implemented a diagnostic assessment, and realized a phonics program. So I thank you for that. The next phase includes the introduction of standard-based report cards. Dr. Dagnan is prepared to give you a brief overview of the new kindergarten report card that will be rolled out in September. Dr. Dagnan?
I'll do that, though.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, trustees. As Dr. Wonko said, two years ago, when we started the curriculum committee, we wanted to address learning needs of the students in the formative years. And to complement ongoing good work that we did, we're moving forward with the full-day pre-K for our four-year-olds. We now have a universal screening tool in place for our K-2 students, a phonics program, the addition of the multisensory reading specialists, and we've also had additional training on the differentiated instruction. And we've talked about this phrase before. We've always done it this way. And what we're going to see with standard-based report cards is this is going to be a paradigm shift for the staff, it'll be a paradigm shift for the administrators, it'll be a change for teachers and students. But we think it's important, and that's why we want to continue with our good work. This was not something that was done top-down. This was something that we did with teachers. We worked with our Roy Childhood Department. We worked with our content specialists. And as you can see, we had a kindergarten committee that was in place, working since February, to ensure that we put the standard-based report cards in place for September. So again, what is standard-based instruction and assessment? Standards in the nine content areas in the state of New Jersey are New Jersey student learning standards. And they say where a student should be, what they shouldn't be able to know and be able to do by a specific grade level. So as you see, it focuses on progress with specific skills. It's aligned to the NJSLA. It's connected to these standards. And the key piece is the assessment takes place in terms of meeting these standards. So we will build assessments that are aligned with the learning standards. So what are the benefits of standard-based report cards? Well, the key piece is going to be a common language across the district for our kindergarten teachers. It also focuses on strengths and challenges. It communicates academic progress more clearly to parents, and I'm going to show you that in the future. And it increases consistency among teachers and grade levels. And as we've been working in the group at the curriculum committee, we are going to continue to move forward in one, two, and three. And we're going to use our curriculum writing money this year to build upon our successes. But we started with kindergarten, and that would be our pilot year. Standard-based report cards are research-based. We've talked about multiple-tiered systems of support. And going back, what is MTSS? Well, the first tier is what do good teachers doing in the classroom, differentiating their instruction? It increases parent engagement. And the other key piece is the fact that these teachers made these, uh, working together. Okay? Next slide talks a little bit about the grading vision. And the key piece is on the bottom. It reinforces a growth mindset by defining learning as hard but achievable. And sometimes when we look at report cards now, students feel like they're failures when they get a number grade and it's a 50 or a 23. But our goal is to say, what are the successes? And I can do this if I keep trying, if I have grit and rigor. We have, presently, we have quarters. We have 45-day marking periods. This will be a change. We, with the kindergarten report card, we're going to have trimesters. So it's different. So instead of having 45 days four times, we'll have 60 days. But it's not as assessment-heavy. It gives us more time for instruction. Remember, kindergarten, they're five and six years old. They're just coming in for the first time. Why do we want to give them a progress report in September and a report card at the end of October when we could have time? And what we can do now is, when we have our open houses, we'll have a reading, um, an independent reading level for our students where we can assign an open house, we can have a book fair. So parents can come in, look at their independent child's independent reading level, and purchase books related to that level. So it does help with, um, back-to-school nights. So you see a little bit of the schedule right now. We will be on a trimester schedule. So this is a change. And this is the key piece of the standard-based report cards. And we have literacy and math. We have, need support would be the NS. I do not know, know it or cannot do it yet, but ultimately, I will. Approaching the standard, I am starting to get it with help, but I am still a little confused. Meeting the standard is, I know what I can do, everything that was taught, with making little or no mistakes. And then the enrichment piece, or the GNT piece, or the student that consistently needs the standard, I know I can do it well enough to make connections that were not taught. Also, I can teach it. So that's the student-centered piece. We will also have within that science and social studies, as well as our social-emotional learning, and our specials, technology, world language, visual and performing arts, and world language. With your support, our principals purchased the developmental reading assessment, DRA. That will be administered three times throughout the year, and will give an independent reading level to all our students in K-2, I'm sorry, to K-3, and it will be assessed three times a year. The key piece of a standard-based report card is the fact that we will be sharing rubrics with the parents. And it will be in that student-friendly language so that if you have a conversation with the teacher, the parent, you can look at a standard and not really understand what the standard is if you're a non educator. But as a parent, we're going to put it in that student-friendly language. So what I did was, I pulled a couple of standards, just to give you an example. In kindergarten, one of the standards is they have to name their lowercase letters and name their uppercase letters. So you'll see in the first trimester, if you need support, if you come in in the first 60 days and you cannot identify 11 lowercase letters. However, you would be meeting the standard for the first 60 days if you can identify the lowercase letters between 16 to 26. And that student that needs a further enrichment, that student will be identified, and we will be able to differentiate instruction because they can identify 40-plus upper, 40-plus letters. All right? Now you see by the third trimester, what is the standard? What do we need to be doing before we leave at the end of the year? We need to identify all 26 lowercase letters and all 26 uppercase letters. And that's what the standard wants. Now, if I'm a parent at home and I'm getting a report card, again, I'm looking at that. I know now, if my child is approaching the standard in the first trimester, I could sit with my child and say, we don't know all the lowercase letters. So now, this is some, a conversation between myself and the teacher. What can I do at home to help that child get to know the letters, the lowercase letters? I also gave you, I think, an example, the mathematics one. What's a standard for mathematics? Is able to count 0 to 20. If you're approaching the standard, partial accuracy would be knowing 0 to 20 row count. If you could come in in the first trimester as kindergarten and you could go to 50, you're exceeding the standard. We might identify that kid for an upper-tier group. Okay? Able to count to 100, okay, by the third trimester, or to count by tens, again, enrichment. But what is the ultimate standard where we want to be by the end of the third trimester? We're able to count 0 to 100 correctly and consistently. And that's the standard. And that's what we want to shoot for. And if we're not doing that, again, it's something I could talk to my child with at home, because I know, let's practice. Let's count to 10. Now let's count to 20. So friendly language that a teacher and parent can have a conversation with to get, become successful. This is currently what our report card looks like in kindergarten. I don't know if you've seen it, or if you have any children in the district. Okay, you look at it, says demonstrates vocabulary knowledge, uses encoding skills, reads for comprehension, not really parent-friendly language. What we're looking at now, in our current one, I don't know if you can see this, but you may be able to see this in your packet. Okay? The language is more friendly. You see at the top, we put in our developmental reading assessment, and it says, DRA level. It says where you should be in kindergarten, where you should be in grade one, two, and three. And we could track that as we move through the years. Okay? It also talks about, I am on target for grade level. And it would help with Lexile levels with selecting books, so we can align reading texts with children. It also has that friendly language, and I put some examples of where we would be with respect to the standards. And again, the language is more teacher-friendly, and we flip over. I've included the science and social studies, and the science is now related to the next-generation science standards. And we see one, example one, I can understand pushes and pulls. Okay, some, some simple physics. We could talk about tug-of-war. You could talk about seesaw. I, I understand about the phases, I think, of the phases of the moon. So these are things from the next-generation science standards, and then we had that for social studies. The other key piece is, if Board Policy 5410 promotes retention, we are not retaining students in kindergarten. So this is an opportunity right now, where at the end of the year, we can see how our students are doing. Are they approaching standards? Are they meeting standards? Are they exceeding standards? And it will keep us on target. And again, it complements what the good work we're doing in our formative years. That's my presentation for standard-based report cards. It was vetted with the curriculum committee, and it's something that we're going to roll out in September. Obviously, we'll have FAQs and presentations in the elementary schools. And it's only one grade level right now.
Thank you. I just thought I'd say that.
Sure. I love the idea of using such a positive nature in this. You know, I think children got to want to go to school. Once we get them doing that, what a success that is. They have to experience some success early. I think these are all tremendous things. I want to thank you, Dr. Dagnan, for your work. Actually, I want to thank the curriculum chair and chairperson, Rhea Bellato, and Jody Casillas, and it was the third guy, we don't want to talk about him. And, but, working together and coming up with this was just tremendous. I think, I think it's going to show gigantic assets to the district.
And President Rogers, just, we did talk about this, and, you know, under Dr. Wonko's leadership and the committee, we did put in Policy 5410 to put a stop on promoting students for math, who are consistently failing and being promoted. I have, you know, preliminary data, and it's coming in now. Last year, in four to eight, there was 150 failures in mathematics, and most of those kids, students would have continued on. So we stopped that and added the morning sessions three times. With that, we've, we're realizing 40 failures this year. And those students are now eligible to attend the summer school to get the added instruction that they need. And the phone call is a little more pleasant with the parent now because they say, well, if I go in the summer, you mean I could get promoted? Yes. If you go from July 1st to July 30th, and you're successful, you have that additional instructional time, and you'll have an opportunity. So we're going to have two sessions in the summer. We had 200 students in the program. Most of them exited out over the school year. We added the instructional time that the director added, and we're going to give some more in the summer. So kudos to the board on that.
Once again, I think that the high school one has been very successful.
Yes.
And I think this is just going down to the elementary school is just a no-brainer. Uh, and I think it also, like, shows the parents that we're here to work with them. We're not here to say yes, no, you know. We want everyone to be successful. That's the whole goal of this thing, you know? If we're not doing that, we shouldn't be here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dagnan.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank Dr. Dagnan and his committee. This was not an easy challenge that I had given him at the beginning, and he rose to the occasion. And as you can see, it is very parent-friendly and should reap great benefits for our district. So thank you again, Dr. Dagnan.
Thank you, Dr. Wonko.
As you know, over the past two years, the Bayonne Public School System has made great strides in the area of school safety. Each of our 12 schools has a school safety climate team, and each school is responsible to plan and hold state-mandated security drills. Tonight, you will see a resolution that all of our schools have met the NJDOE school security drill requirements. And I will be signing a statement of assurance to verify the same. Mr. Lopez will now give you a summary of this year's security drills. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. As you see in Resolution C20, that will be in, on the agenda tonight, that's C20. Our 12 building principals have confirmed and sent backup documentation to Central Office that they have completed two fire drills and one safety drill per month during this school year. The school safety drills we held this year at all 12 schools were fire evacuation, active-shooter, non-fire evacuation, bomb threat, lockdown, and shelter in place. The drills are planned in coordination with the Bayonne Police, Fire, and OEM departments. Our school safety climate teams will also run tabletop exercises, critique their drills, and run other drills throughout the school year. Our district tests our school notification and communications weekly with the Bayonne Police Department. And I would like to thank Chief Geisler, Chief Weaver, OEM Coordinator Junior Ferranti, and District Safety Coordinator Carrie for all of their support and guidance throughout the school year, as we all have the same goal, to keep our school community safe. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Wonko, who has been a school safety expert for a long time and has brought many positive safety initiatives to our district over the last two years. Doc, we are going to miss you, and thank you for your guidance over the last two years.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I, I need to thank Mr. Lopez. Even today, as an example, we had a downed electrical wire that a contractor had hit, and we had to do an emergency evacuation of the school. And Mr. Lopez was right there on the scene, making sure all of the students were safe. And we were able to dismiss properly, orderly, and also continue to hold a program that was scheduled for after-school today. We were only running about 15 minutes late.
Yes.
So great job. Thank you. The business office continues to work closely with Genesis and Mr. Brian DeLucia to finalize a swish, switch from Systems 3000 to Genesis for payroll. In addition, the business office opened bids for the financing of a school bus and Chromebooks for next year. Also, we have various facility projects ongoing in the district. Mr. Figu will discuss these items in detail. Mr. Figu?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and good evening. Our office continues to work with Genesis on a daily basis to successfully make the transfer to our new payroll system. Expectations for rollover will be July 1, with our summer employment pool to ensure smooth implementation for September 1st, when everyone will be implemented with Genesis for payroll. Genesis will be on-site throughout the month to assist with any questions or issues that may arise. On June 12, bids were opened for a new school bus and new Chromebook, Chromebooks for devices that were end-of-life. We utilized the Huntington County Education Service Commission, and we are presenting with the lowest rates that the ESE has seen in over two years. Now the decision will need to be made to proceed with the new school bus, as recommended by the transportation supervisor, and Chromebooks to replace the end-of-life devices recommended by the acting director of technology. Updates on facilities, midtown roof repairs, scaffolding has been set up in the back spoolyard of the complex with outside staircase access for contractors to access our roof without entering our building. Woodrow Wilson window lental work continues in the evenings, not to disrupt the learning process. Their work goes from 3:00 to 11:00. They were shut down two days this week because of elementary school graduation. They insisted on coming in on Saturdays and Sundays, so don't fall behind in the project. So they are right on target. VHS lentil masonry project's moving along well. The contractors had made their way from 30th Street now onto Avenue A in front of the auditorium. The expectation of completion will be mid-July. I also want to thank Dr. Wonko for his guidance, especially for me this year, in this position. He's been a great help for me, and obviously, a great resource for the district, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figu. On Monday, I introduced the incoming superintendent, Mr. John Neese, to the members of our cabinet. We had a meeting for about an hour, hour and a half, to go over some material to ensure the smooth transfer. I also arranged for a tour of our schools, so he was brought around the city to see all the elementary schools, as well as the high school complex. We've been in contact since his appointment. We're working diligently, the entire cabinet, as well as myself, to ensure this smooth transition. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions for me. If not, I'd like to turn the meeting back to Dr. Maida.
Okay. Um, approval of a minute, acceptance of communications, I believe just these last two, a retirement by Richard Roberts, and resignation, those are the only two you haven't seen. Can I get a motion? Someone like to move?
I'll move.
Now? Would someone like a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then, we have three, actually, four commendations tonight. We have three students, actually, one of our students, Elizabeth, will not be with us tonight, the first place for the Holocaust Memorial Writing Contest. That brings us to curriculum. All the resolutions were done at committee, except for the very last, it's staff to attend workshop, A23 International Society of Technology. We have Kareem McAndrews, our acting director of technology, will be attending that. Just a note, I will be moving A16, is going to come off consent, and I'll put that on non-consent. Is there a motion and a second from members of the committee?
I'll move.
Okay, Maria will move.
I'll second.
And Jody will sit. Okay, moving along to finance, building and grounds. B7 is just so that we could, again, it's our annual membership for the Hudson County International Athletic League. Okay, that's, we do that every year. B8 is approval of our insurance removal. This is the New Jersey State Insurance Group coverage. That was sent home with a backup page. We've been seeing savings over the last three years. And you'll see that there's also a savings for this year. B9 and B10 is approval of appropriation transfers. B9 is our maintenance reserve account. And you'll see that resolution is, I believe, $250,000. And then B10 would be our capital reserve fund balance, and that would be a total of $500,000. B11, as Mr. Figu said, we had an award to bid on our lease purchase, and this is the resolution for that. And like I said, everybody was excited on the conference call as I read the numbers, but that they haven't seen a rate that low in, in quite a while. B12, we were going to go out to bid. We're going to rescind that right now. We're going to rescind the bid advertisement. We're going to clean that up and go back out with that. That was a food service. Food service, which is very lengthy. It's, it's, it turns into a lot of work, and we just want to make sure that everything's done correctly so we have time. We'll re-advertise a new date with a new advertisement. So that concludes finance. If I could have Joe. And Joe, you remember, I asked Joe, our president? Okay. So that concludes finance. We'll move along to personnel. Mr. Lopez sent home resolutions of certain items that might have changed from committee. I'm going to ask him to take us to C6. We'll do our monthly bowling.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. In accordance with the Bayonne Board of Education Policy 5512, during this reporting period, eight incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Mary J. Dunleavy has been investigated and confirmed. Strategies and resources have been provided to the victim to assist the recovery process. Consequences and remedial measures were given to the offender. All documentation is being retained by the anti-bullying coordinator. Three incidents at Philip G. Vroom, one incident at Mary J. Dunleavy, and two incidents at Harvest Man, and one incident at Washington Community School. In these seven cases, there was no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIB. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinators.
As for our resolutions, the majority were done at committee. I'll ask you to turn to C24 and C25. This is approval, one is approval of teacher assistance. C25 is approval of teachers. This is for our before-after-school lunch duty. So they kind of go together, C24, C25. C26, we had a resolution just for some emergency backups for the prom. C27 was done at committee. This is administrators that have not reached tenure. Kim Demetich is going to be reaching tenure on September 2nd. That's that. C28 is for inside. C31 is inside. C32, we have some summer IEPs. I need a staff member, and you'll see there's a special ed teacher, Francis Forman Hurley. That'll be assigned to help us in the summer. C33, we're some names for graduation, project graduation. C34, C35, C36 are inside, along with D1, D2, D3. Actually, all of these are for inside.
You have to look at C3. You have a name there for Bayonne High School Arts and the same individual.
Yes, but that's okay, because that's the previous, that's the year we're in now, Dennis. So that's, yeah. Trustee Ryan brought that to my attention this afternoon. We checked on it. That's because it's the existing school year. It's not next year. That's all I have for outside. I do have some handouts for inside. There was an over request in which the trustees were named. And also, I have some background on the superintendent that I'd like to hand out in closed session. So at this time, we will return to a closed session. Closed session for legal personnel items. It is 5:43, and the board will be adjourned.